Yes, yes. This is, the rain has stopped, so it should be a very good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, October 17th, 2017. On behalf of the school board members and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching on TV. I'll call as president to transact the business of the school division. As customary, we will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Warwick High School, Cameron Smith and Isaiah Ramsey. First, Cameron will come forward and deliver the invocation. He will be followed by Isaiah, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Cameron, please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Smith. I am a junior at Warwick High School in the International Baccalaureate Program. I play soccer and volleyball at Warwick. And I am also involved in different clubs such as the Principal's Advisory Group, Male Mentorship, Warwick High School Maroon Corps. In addition, I am a lieutenant in the Newport News Police Department Explorer Post 224, a cash manager at Chick-fil-A, and a community volunteer. After high school, I would like to attend the University of Virginia and major in psychology and use my degree towards a career in the Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Alright.
Tonight's invocation is a poem by Edgar A. Guest entitled "Don't Quit." I chose this poem because it was written to inspire and motivate people to never give up on living their dreams and goals in life. "Don't Quit" by Edgar Albert Guest. When things go wrong, as they sometimes will, when the road you're trudging seems all uphill, when the funds are low and the debts are high, and you want to smile but you have to sigh, when care is pressing you down a bit, rest if you must, but don't you quit. Life is queer with its twists and turns, as every one of us sometimes learns. And many failure turns about, when he might have won, had he stuck it out. Don't give up, though the pace may seem slow, you may succeed with another blow. Often the goal is nearer than, it sometimes seems faint, faltering man. Often the struggler has given up, when he might have captured the victor's cup. And he learned too late, when the night slipped down, how close he was to the golden crown. Success is failure turned inside out, the silver tint of the clouds of doubt. And you can never tell how close you are, it may be near when it seems so far. So stick to the fight when your heart is hit, it's when things seem worse that you must not quit. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good job, Cameron. That's, uh, all those accolades that you do, you're cashier, you're in your army, you're in the police department. Are you in school? IB program? Next, we'll have Isaiah. Please come on up. Tell us a little bit about yourself before you, uh, we say the pledge.
Good evening. My name is Isaiah Ramsey. I am a junior at Warwick High School. I am in the International Baccalaureate Program, Men's Mentorship Program, and a community volunteer. This Saturday, I will be volunteering at the Fall Carnival at Yates Elementary School. I have been in the Warwick Greater Band since freshman year and a student leader around the school. After high school, my plan is to join the United States Naval Academy or pursue a career in music majoring in music education at James Madison University. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Cameron and Isaiah, two IB program, band leaders, volunteers. What I ask for you to do when you guys friculate and graduate from college or graduate from military, what have you, come back to our town. They say sometimes we don't, our kids are not ready. I mean, you guys are already ready, you know? So we are producing kids that are college career and citizen ready here in Newport News. So, thank you and to your parents who are with you and your school family, could you please stand and be recognized? And the principal, if they're here, or any of the other school bases? Gentlemen, thank you very much. You are unbelievable representation of your school and to our city. So, uh, thank you. Keep up the good work. Now, we're gonna move on agenda to Board Recognitions.
Yes, tonight we have some very special employees and departments to honor who've been outstanding this year, and then we have a special partner that we want to honor tonight. So, Mr. Hunter and I'll go down front and Ms. Price will help us.
Good evening. I have the honor of presenting this month's School Board Recognitions. Every school day, drivers in Newport News share the road with over 300 yellow school buses. These buses are driven by some of the school division's most dedicated employees, who provide safe and efficient transportation for nearly 25,000 students. Being a bus driver is a great responsibility, and our next honoree has served students and the school division for 24 years. Recently, Lonnie Fay LaClark was named Newport News Public Schools Bus Driver of the Year. Ms. LaClark, would you please come forward? Ms. LaClark is a great role model, is a great role model for the other drivers. She is described as being loyal, dedicated, and hardworking. She is passionate about her students and is a very skilled driver. The criterion for a bus driver is very stringent. Honorrees must have outstanding attendance, excellent annual evaluations, and they must volunteer and maintain a good safety record. During her tenure with the school division, Ms. LaClark has served as a trainer, a master driver, a mentor, and a key driver. In acknowledging Ms. LaClark's award, the leadership team noted that she earned the Top Driver Honor because of her exceptional attendance, superior driving record and job knowledge, and her tireless commitment to our students, faculty, and staff. Ms. LaClark presently serves many students, and again, we wish her congratulations on earning the Top Driver Award. Our Rookie Driver of the Year. We'll move on to our Rookie Assistant of the Year. The role of our next honoree is essential to ensuring that our students arrive at school safely and securely. Bus assistants are responsible for maintaining safety on the school bus by providing 101 attention to our special needs and our younger students. Each year, the Transportation Department also recognizes a bus assistant with five or fewer years of service with the Rookie Assistant of the Year Award. The awardee must have outstanding attendance and demonstrate extensive knowledge of the bus's equipment and safety and emergency procedures. The Rookie Assistant of the Year is Marjorie Payton. Ms. Payton, please come forward. Ms. Payton works well with her students. She has had great annual evaluations and she maintains all of her required training. She was selected for this honor because of her outstanding attendance and her superb care for and her understanding of our special need students. She became a member of the Transportation Team in 2015 after serving the school division for 10 years in the Plant Services Department. So again, congratulations, Ms. Payton. I also want to acknowledge two honorrees that were unable to join us this evening, and that is Gary Winogun, and he was named the Rookie Bus Driver of the Year, and mechanic Alan Brady, and he was named Top Wrench, which of course is the top mechanic of the year. So we wish them congratulations as well. Joining these ladies this evening are other members of the Transportation Team, Mr. Shay Coats, our Director of Transportation. And of course, the family members and friends of these ladies, would you please stand and be acknowledged as well? Thank you for joining us. Thank you, and again, congratulations. The school division's Child Nutrition Services Department launched the first Best Overall Cafeteria Awards Program six years ago. Cafeteria managers apply for recognition in the awards program at the beginning of each year. And each cafeteria and its staff are evaluated throughout the school year. The cafeteria staff is assessed on their promotions, cleanliness, health report scores, leadership, menus, and other criteria which are scored by a review team. Tonight, we're acknowledging our recent honorrees. For the 2016-2017 school year, Lee Hall Elementary School's cafeteria staff won the Early Childhood Elementary Division Award of Excellence for the Best Cafeteria. Tonight, we're pleased to honor the dedicated staff at Lee Hall in recognition of this achievement. We'll begin with cafeteria manager Mary Bachelor. Carol Alston. Michelle Ellison. Stanley Johnson. Millicent Knox. Pearl Randall. Priscilla Shute. And rounding out the staff is Rosio Rios, she was unable to be present this evening. The staff at Heritage High School earned the Best Cafeteria Award in the Secondary Division. Please come forward to receive your recognition. Cafeteria Manager Sophia Douglas. Sabrina Davis. Angela Green. Maggie Jackson. Whitney Jackson. Alice Jordan. Right over here, Ms. Lucinda Kelly. Anisha Phillips. Al Trosper. Other members of the Heritage Team include Roderick Fogey, Shaniqua Hairston, Trinise Jones, Yvetta Kemp, Tanette McEachern, oh, and Tanette McEachern. Again, our congratulations to all of them as well. The Award of Merit highlights the success of our second-tier honorrees in the Best Cafeteria category. The team at B.C. Charles earned the Award of Merit for the Elementary Division this year. That was their proud principle. So please join me in congratulating Cafeteria Manager Yvette De Priest. Willie Diggs. Alita Franklin. Vanetta Jacobs. Elizabeth Lilly. And Gwen Nessmith. In the Secondary Division, the cafeteria team from Menchville High School earned the Award of Merit. Please join me in congratulating Cafeteria Manager Karen Porter. Christine Herr. And Joel Salazar. Now, this is a busy cafeteria, and they're busy this evening as well. So, please also join me in acknowledging, I'm gonna make sure I get this right, Ayeko Kluk, oh yeah, thank you. Patricia Hagler, Patricia Hardy, Natalie Krebs, Megan Minor, and Chris Smith. They round out the Menchville Team. Now, joining these individuals tonight are some members of their families from work and home. Would you please stand for all of our cafeteria honorrees? Would you please stand, all of our family members? I'd also like to acknowledge the Executive Director of Child Nutrition Services Cathy Alexander and Debbie Pascal, Supervisor. And the administrators of these four fine schools. Would you please stand and be recognized as well? Thank you, and again, congratulations to all of our Best Cafeteria Award honorrees. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association, or V S B A, recognizes media organizations and reporters for providing valuable information to the community about public schools. The media honor roll representatives are recognized because they provide balanced and accurate information. Media representatives are nominated for this recognition by the local school board and named to the media honor roll by the Virginia School Boards Association. This evening, on behalf of the school board, I am pleased to recognize this year's School Board inductee, Jane Hammond, Education Reporter for the Daily Press. Ms. Hammond? Ms. Hammond has received a resolution signed by all of the members of the school board and the superintendent. It reads, "Whereas in each community, public schools are shaped by community input to provide the most appropriate and effective education for all students who attend these schools, and whereas public schools are dependent upon community support in numerous ways, including support and goal-setting for the education of all students, establishing successful business and industry partnerships, volunteer and booster programs, funding operations, and electing qualified school board members. And whereas much of the community's knowledge and opinions about public schools rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues, and the tone of the reporting. And whereas Jane Hammond, an education reporter at the Daily Press, provides consistently outstanding service to the community by focusing on both the successes achieved by students and teachers and other staff members, and the challenges facing our public schools. And whereas Ms. Hammond provides accurate, detailed coverage of Newport News Public Schools through the fair and balanced reporting of academic initiatives, student and staff events, and school board meetings. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association established the media honor roll to recognize reporters and media executives who provide balanced and accurate information to the public, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Newport News place the name of Jane Hammond on the Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll, calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of her reporting on our city's public schools. In witness thereof, we have hereto set our hands, and again, it is signed by each member of the school board and the superintendent. Ms. Hammond, congratulations, and thank you for sharing the news and information about this school division. Congratulations. Again, we wish congratulations to all of tonight's honorrees. At this time, we'll take a six-minute break so that our honorrees and their guests may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
At General Stanford Elementary, the students, who are today's learners, are becoming tomorrow's leaders a lot quicker than expected. Students at General Stanford led the way while assisting Virginia Governor Terry McAuliffe with the first-ever Feed Virginia Day of Action. Spearheaded by First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe, over 250 events across Virginia were held on September 29th to fight hunger and encourage healthy, active kids. At General Stanford, located on Fort Eustis, students worked alongside military volunteers, elected officials, and volunteers from business partners to pack two pallets full of food for the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank. Every Friday, the food bank coordinates through area schools to discreetly send home backpacks full of healthy foods to break the cycle of hunger in low-income communities. And after giving their time to serve other students, General Stanford received a gift of their own. The Carmax Foundation partnered with the national nonprofit organization Kaboom to donate a brand-new imagination playground to the school. Kids and adults enjoyed an opportunity to create with the giant foam building blocks, which gives children the power to design their own course of play while encouraging an active child. With assistance from the Military Child Education Coalition, students and volunteers at General Stanford did their part on Feed Virginia Day of Action to fuel learning across the peninsula and promote a bright future for our Commonwealth. For the fourth year, incoming freshmen to Heritage High School's Governor's STEM Academy had the opportunity to receive an early introduction to their advanced areas of study. For three weeks this summer, 48 ninth graders were enrolled in Stimulating Minds' Summer Enrichment Program to gain the skills and knowledge needed to jumpstart their STEM education. Each day, students rotated through four different courses, gaining valuable experiences in cybersecurity, video game design, engineering, and underwater robotics. Upperclassmen already enrolled in Heritage's STEM Academy volunteered their time as student ambassadors, passing on their knowledge to the next freshman class. Industry professionals also lent a guiding hand, with volunteers from Newport News Shipbuilding's Career Pathways, Mid-Atlantic Regional Maintenance Center, and sailors from Naval Station Norfolk mentoring students in all four courses. During the entire second week, students continued their stimulating experience at NASA Langley Research Center. For the second year, the staff and college interns with junior game changers developed an immersive experience that included engineering challenges, guest speakers, tours of NASA's state-of-the-art facilities, and hands-on programming with drones and robots. By successfully completing Stimulating Minds, each student earned a semester credit before the school year even began. And as the Summer Enrichment Program came to a close, students put their knowledge and experiences on display during a final expo. School administrators, special guests, and business partners toured the students' accomplishments and witnessed firsthand the stemtastic growth of Heritage's incoming freshman class. Even with five Grammy Awards, notoriety as one of the top 10 bassists of all time, and collaborations with many talented artists around the world, Victor Wooten is still enthusiastic about spending time with local student musicians. Recently, the youngest Wooten brother made time to visit three Newport News high schools before performing over the weekend with the Virginia Symphony Orchestra. Victor Wooten grew up in Newport News in the 70s and 80s, along with his four musically talented brothers. Since the age of two, Victor had a bass in his hands, under the tutelage of his oldest brother Reggie. The Wooten Brothers graduated from Demby High School before blessing the world with their musical talents. While in town, Wooten visited his alma mater, along with Woodside and Menchville High Schools. At Woodside, Wooten spoke with guitar students about the positive power of music and performed an improvised solo on the bass. At Menchville, 500 students, mostly enrolled in music classes, enjoyed Wooten's unveiling of his custom-built bow bass and were able to ask questions about Wooten's life and career. Two lucky music students were selected to perform and receive valuable insights and encouragement from the award-winning bassist. And before Wooten's first performance with the Virginia Symphony Orchestra at C N U's Ferguson Center for the Arts, Menchville's Advanced Guitar Ensemble was invited to perform in the first student showcase of the season. Wooten's generosity with his time and positive insights left many Newport News students inspired to tell their story through the power of music. to tell their story through the power of music.
Welcome back, and we hope that you enjoyed the School Board Spotlight. During our meetings, we provide the time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also, again, at the end. The board considers it an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns or get back with you at a later time. I believe we do have some cards. So when you come up, we do have some cards today. So when you come up, please come up. You'll see three lights over there. When you begin, the green light lights up. Then you'll see a yellow light, means that you have 30 seconds. And then a red light appears, along with a beep, means that you can wrap up in your comments. So at this time, we do have a card or two. So Jeanette Hernandez? Ms. Hernandez, how are you doing this evening?
Fine, thank you.
You've heard our guidelines, and please welcome the mic.
Yes, a couple of concerns that I have regarding my children, my students. Situation with safety in the classroom. I don't know what the training is teachers receive when there's an altercation, a physical altercation between students. But I know that what my son went through in the classroom, sent him to the ER. Mostly precautionary, but still, he did end up with a concussion. And we spend years teaching our children, go to an adult, find an adult, let them handle the situation. Several long minutes, my child was being beaten. There's no one there pulling this child off of him. There's nothing to stop it. He's waiting for security. In the meantime, he's curled up like this, and there's nothing he can do. So I would like to know what can be done, or if you can address any way, training for teachers to handle this while they're waiting for security to come. What can be done to try and shorten this duration? Because when it's you, a minute, two minutes, three minutes is a very long time to be lying on a floor curled up in a ball. That's a big one for me. The other concern I have is with the magnet schools and the schools that you send out flyers for, for students to apply to. They're supposed to be these innovative programs. They're supposed to be meant for children who are performing well in school. It's supposed to be something you aspire to go to, this innovative program. I'm looking at some of these schools, and they're not accredited. I'm taking a child from a program that's working for him and putting him into this program that's supposed to be innovative and interesting and challenging for him, but you aren't meeting the proficiency requirements for the students you already have there. I don't understand this. So that's a concern for me, also as a parent trying to educate my children. Those are just some things I would like to see addressed or have questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Someone will respond back to your answer. Okay, next we have Mr. James Standstill. Is that correct?
Yeah, I know the rules. I've been to city council. Good evening, audience. I'm here to speak on the C students behalf, all right? And the reason I'm here to speak, I spoke to Ms. Simmons once, spoke to Mr. Harris once. The majority of every high school graduating class, whether you all know it or not, the majority are my C students, all right? Do your numbers, and that's across the country. Now, this city has two trade programs as studying outside of school. Truck driving in the Cook School opened up in the last year. You don't even look at how inadequate this city is with trade programs, all right? And my complaint is, you got New Horizons, all right? For those in the audience that don't know, New Horizons covers James City County, York County, Newport News, and Hampton. When you add up the amount of cities in those two counties and those two cities, that is over 500,000 people. And you got a regional trade school. Now, I'm reading in the paper a month ago, they need auto mechanics. Now, my question is, and it's a very simple question, how many kids are being denied the ability to get into the auto mechanic school over at New Horizons or Thomas Nelson? And for that matter, how expansive are our trade programs for our students that are C students coming out of high school? You want to drop the crime rate? You got to teach these C students some kind of skill. And I understand the career program, Ms. Kilgore told me about that. But I would like to see more trade programs as they were when I was in school years ago. Years ago, Demby had an automotive program, Warwick had an automotive program, so you could get more kids in the automotive training program. Nobody on this panel can probably tell me how many kids apply to the automotive program over at New Horizons every year, and how many are denied. Guaranteed, none of you can answer that question, and I would like for you all to answer that question for the viewing audience sometime in the future. Because they need to know how many of their children are being denied an opportunity. These kids are graduating from school, and you wonder why crime is going up, because you ain't helping the C students. And the majority of your graduates are C students. Believe it or not, look at your numbers. You got two magnet schools in this city, and your two schools that aren't magnet outnumber the magnet schools. So that tells you more graduate with lower grades. But nobody wants to look at the C student. Why? And this is something that needs to be looked at, because we are graduating too many kids with no skills, no trades. They got a C average, they get out of school, they get no counseling services, because I was a C student at Demby High School years, years, and years ago. Yes, I finished college, but how many other kids have that opportunity? You can't go to Thomas Nelson on the bus here because it's not feasible if you got a job. None of the schools in Newport News are close enough that they can take up a trade when they graduate high school, and nobody's looking at increasing the amount of trade schools in this city. What is the problem? Y'all just want these kids to become criminals or something? Now, when one of them hits you upside the head, then you'll think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more cards?
No, I don't have any more cards.
Okay, there being none, we're going to continue with our agenda. We have next of our consent agenda. There are consent agenda, item 3.01, minutes from our regular session, September 19th, 2017. 3.02, financial reports, revenue and expenses reports from September 2017, along with the child nutrition services, September 2017. Do we have any personnel reports?
We do not.
None being said, can we have a motion for, to approve of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
You heard the motion. Is there any question? There being none, could you call the row?
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
And Mr. Ely?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to continue on our agenda, and we'll move to number four, action items. We have any personnel action items?
We do not.
There being none, we'll move on to item number 4.02. We have with our Dominion Energy easement at Todd Stadium, okay? And if you recall from our last meeting, we were briefed. We were briefed on the easement that's needed for the additional wires at Todd Stadium. And if anyone does have any questions, we'll call for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
You heard the motion and the second. Any question? There being none, please call the row.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
And Mr. Ely?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. And we're going to move on to our reports. First up, 5.00, we'll have our new accreditation matrix. Is that Mr. Nichols?
Yes, sir. Good evening, this is Chairman, Dr. Chairboard Members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to take you through what we know so far about the proposed accreditation matrix. We showed an overview at the past couple meetings, and we said we'd dive in deeper to specific components. In the new accreditation system, there are six total components. We're going to work on graduation and dropout rate this evening, and we'll do it in the context of the recent release of data. So on-time graduation and dropout, just want to highlight that momentarily. So in 2008, our on-time graduation was 72.9%. We've just come out with our highest-ever on-time graduation rate. Students starting as freshmen, ending four years later, walking across the stage at Hampton Coliseum at 93.4%. So great strides have been made each and every year. A similarly beautiful number, since 2008, the dropout rate has decreased from 12% down to 2.3%. So 12% representing more than 300 kids to now 2.3% being 43 kids. And I'll talk about those 43 kids in a second, but that's overall where we're standing now with graduation. I also wanted to highlight, this is a lot of numbers, and you don't have to worry about them on the screen visually, but I just wanted to show on-time graduation, completion, and dropout compared to the state, and just highlight for you real quick the areas that we're ahead of the state. And of course, that's all of them. So no matter what the student group is, no matter what, whether it's on-time, completion, or dropout, we are ahead of the state rate significantly in every single category with every single group of students. So as far as how you finish, this is how we finished last year. So it's a beautiful screen, and it's nice to be able to do that sort of highlight. And we'll dive into them a little deeper before we put them in the context of the new accreditation system. So this is on-time graduation rate, and you see the student groups at the bottom. And I want to show ours, which are up there now. One of the things that I love about this line is you hear a lot about achievement gaps. But because of the consistency of the work that we've been doing in Newport News and laying that foundation with a large group of people and the commitment from the school board, you can see that there are very small gaps, if any, in who graduates on time in Newport News Public Schools. You'll also notice that our largest, our highest percentage of graduates are economically disadvantaged. So students on free and reduced lunch actually outperforming everyone in Newport News at 95.6%. So if I was to draw a line at the top of that, you would see very small gaps. And what I love about the people that we get to work with, you would think they would celebrate this, and they did for like half a second. And then they turn their attention to those ones that aren't over 90 yet, and how we can keep pushing students with disabilities, English learners, homeless, and so forth. Just to put a couple of these numbers in context for you, the Alliance for Excellent Education has a mission with on-time graduation rate. They, as a country, predict we'll reach 90% on-time graduation in 2020. So 2017, we stand at 93.4%, well ahead of the mission of the country. I mentioned economically disadvantaged at 95.6%. The current rate in the United States for kids who are economically disadvantaged is 76%. So you're talking 20 percentage points higher than the country is doing with students on free and reduced lunch. We talked about we open doors and access for kids. Lots of doors get opened for all kids in Newport News. Students with disabilities is another category I'll point out for you, 89.7%, so closing in on 90. The graduation rate for students with disabilities across the country is 64.6%. So really doing big work with students with disabilities. So I have the nice state number right beside it, so you can kind of see visually how we compare with the state when it comes to graduation. But this has been a consistent effort from 2008 moving forward, and will continue to be a consistent effort to move those numbers. So dropout rates, just another way to look at those, and wanted to highlight how we're doing with dropout rates, Newport News versus the state, and just looking at a few groups here. I want you to notice the last group of students, and that's our homeless population, and we do serve a significant portion of homeless kids. Our dropout rate with homeless kids is 0%, not 1%. When you look at the state rate at almost 20%, doing big work for kids, opportunities and access. English learners is another one, almost 25% of English learners. Students whose primary language is not English drop out in the state of Virginia. We've moved ours down to 7.3%, and we're going to keep pushing those numbers. Kids on free and reduced lunch, less than 1%. So while I'm highlighting these numbers, let me talk about the actual number of 43. So 43 students in that dropout rate. 19 of those 43 kids are actually incarcerated. But due to state rule, even though we're still providing them services, even though we're still getting education, even though we're still reaching out, we have to classify 19 of those 43 as dropouts. So it's sort of a technical glitch, so if you want to talk about a real dropout number, it's significantly less than the numbers you're seeing in front of you right now. But we're working with the state on those provisions. They apply them differently to different rates, but that's just looking at the number of kids. And we're still working with the kids that are technically considered dropouts. We're not giving up. We're going to keep pushing, which is why you'll see our completion rates continue to grow as well. So wonderful news on our endgame in Newport News as far as getting kids ready for college, career, and citizenship. So let's put that in the context of this new accreditation matrix, the proposed accreditation matrix. I'm going to zoom in on those two pieces, and then we'll go to some other pieces as we go throughout this year. But really want to focus on graduation rate and dropout rate. So I talked to you a lot about on-time graduation. The accreditation system doesn't use on-time graduation. They use a different formula, and it's called the Graduation and Completion Index. We're very familiar with this. We're currently using it now. But just to give you sort of how it works, because it works very differently, it really awards full credit for a student who earns a Board of Education-approved diploma, so 100 points, and then partial credit for other outcomes. So whether you get a GED or whether you're still in school, you know, for kids that take longer than four years and need a fifth year, you still get credit for that. Whether you get a certificate or program completion, and then zero points for a dropout. And then you have the math formula up here. This is how we calculate it. So the total number of students, the total points divided by the number of students who get a GCI, your graduation completion index. So we work with a little bit different formula. Your graduation completion index is going to be higher than your on-time graduation rate, because it counts all the different ways that we get a kid to finish. So if our on-time graduation is 93.4, you better believe our GCI is going to be even higher than that. So let's put it in the context of accreditation. So the accreditation system has three levels, at or above standard, near standard, and below standard. Tonight, I'm not even going to bother you with what level two and level three are, because we're so far above level one that we're not even going to worry about what level two and level three are. So let me show it to you right now. So level one is to be greater than 88. You know, our on-time graduation was 93.4. So here's what GCI looks like at our schools. Starting with the Chippewa Dream and working your way to Woodside, so they're in alphabetical order. You can see if 88 is our target, we're well above that target right now. So we'd be one of those top-performing schools when it comes to graduation. So the new accreditation matrix, or the proposed accreditation matrix, we sit favorably when it comes to graduation. They don't slice it by groups of students, but if they did, we'd still be sitting in a very good place as far as graduation goes. So let's turn our attention to dropout. So it's the same sort of thing, three levels. We don't even need to look at level two and level three, because level one is where we reside and where we'll continue to reside. So that's your current year, or three-year average dropout rate is between 0 and 5.9. Once again, I'll pull up the total, so you can see the total number of kids in a cohort. So you can see the total number of kids in a cohort and then the various dropout rates associated with each school. So zero to five point nine is the dropout percentage. And you can see that all of our schools are well within that zero to five point nine percent. So that's really how the accreditation piece would work with graduation and dropouts. They're pretty straightforward and, and we're in really good shape with that. We're in really good shape because of a wide network of support. And Vanessa Stevens is here tonight, unless she left because she knew I was coming to the podium. Nope, she's still here, she's in the back. Vanessa really leads a lot of this work. She's in charge of her graduation coaches and leads them. If you've ever been in a meeting with her, she's relentless about kids and outcomes. And that consistency and the consistency of our secondary schools and our counselors and the whole team, we have this wide network. So I'll show it to you. We have three different layers to it. We have a school-based layer with principals and assistant principals and attendants, folks and counselors. We have a central office team. You saw our English language numbers, our ESL per people are a big part of that. Our special ed team is a big part of that. So we really go after each kid individually. And we're at a point with forty-three kids and a dropout rate, really less than that, that we are able to go individually and work on individual cases with kids. So no obstacles can really get in the way. And if you try to get away, we will hunt you down and we will chase you and we will find you. The graduation team has been, received a, an award the past couple of years about using social media. So kids will go on social media, we'll find them, we'll say, hey, let's get, let's get back in and let's finish. And we do that kid after kid after kid. That's how you get a rate that continues to climb even though it's in the nineties already. And also not to forget our community connections, so court services, our faith-based community, juvenile services, law enforcement, and so forth. It really is all of these people together that make these numbers such a beautiful story in Newport News. And it's really sandwiched in with our families. They're a big part of the work we do and we include them every step of the way and with our graduation coaches. So I wanted to highlight Vanessa because she works tirelessly and her team as well. I met with them last week and for a team that just put up the highest graduation rate in, in the region, the lowest dropout rate in the region and one of the top in the state, you would think they'd be excited. They were for, like I said, about two seconds. And they turned their attention to how can we work with kids who are incarcerated? How can we do this? How can we do that? Relentless execution by this team. So that's our wide network of support and that's how we're able to continue to push this. We're very consistent. We have a team that's been together and that is pushing and it knows the rules and knows the ins and outs and knows all those kind of things. And they work with everybody to get it done. So back to the accreditation piece, here's our timeline once again. This is our transition year where we'll use both accreditation systems. Eighteen, nineteen, the following school year, the new matrix would be in place except for college, career, and civic-ready. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, that indicator would be applied as well. So that's still the same timeline, you'll keep seeing that every time we bring you a portion of it. But we really just wanted to dive into this proposed accreditation matrix, use the recent release of data with graduation and dropout, and then frame it in this new system so you can see how we've done and then how we're going to do in the future. So thank you for your time this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions or probably defer to Vanessa since she's the expert.
Are there any questions on this time?
Just one little question. So is this for just high school accreditation?
This is for, no, elementary, middle, and high school, but the, some of the factors do not figure in. So we don't, it's, their dropout rate and graduation rate don't apply to middle school and elementary school. But the chronic absenteeism, which we'll go into in, in the coming months and the achievement ones do apply to elementary and middle as well. So yes, I should have framed that in the beginning, but both of those are high school only. So thank you.
Yes, Mr. Harris?
I'll go right now. Okay. Yeah. Could you explain to me the process that the school division uses when you deal with the homeless population? Because I'm sure I'm going to get a couple of calls after this about, you know, I didn't know we had homeless kids.
Well, absolutely.
So could you just?
Well, and the definition of homeless is a fairly broad one. But what we do is we try to disrupt their lives and their services as much as possible from an educational standpoint. So we, we picked up kids all over the peninsula. If, if they're homeless and they've, they've started with, sort of moved away, moved away because of circumstances and so forth. So from our end, we work very hard. Jane Moreland leads that for us in the school division and work with schools to identify kids and families who are facing those circumstances, try to wrap as many supports around them. South Morrison is, is, South Morrison, our partnership with the city is, is key to that as far as providing resources. And then from the educational standpoint, we just try to disrupt their lives as little as possible. So if you're being successful at one of our elementary or middle schools or high schools, we're in control of that. We run buses everywhere. So we'll continue to get you to the school that you're being successful in and not disrupt that piece. So that's mainly our goal is to minimize the disruption on the family from an educational standpoint and then try to develop strong relationships with the kids and families to know that they're facing those circumstances. Because we have a lot of resources and we can support and fill in some of those gaps. Our family engagement folks, our school social workers, and so forth.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'll just say that this is just a fantastic and phenomenal report. I couldn't be more excited and ecstatic about the results that we're getting. I really just applaud everyone associated with this. I'm getting great feedback within the community that to see us beating the state average year after year is just phenomenal. We should be very proud that we're in a school division where regardless of the color of your skin or your economic circumstances, our kids are succeeding.
Absolutely.
So to see this report is just, uh, this is fantastic. So no questions for me tonight, this will be one time I don't have questions. That, that is, this is just that good to see us beating the state in every category, every, everywhere that's tracked. And then to see that we've got zero percent dropout rate with our homeless population, where we consider that to be the most at-risk population there is. And no one, I don't think anyone in the country has the type of results we have, especially with the economically disadvantaged. So this is just fantastic.
I was ready for your question of how are we going to do?
Are you going to do more?
Yeah. It's funny that Vanessa and I met today about some of the requests we're going to make to the state as far as some flexibility and some different things that we can do to, to keep pushing that. So thank you.
Good evening. I, I just want to say being the elder on the board. But this is just outstanding and phenomenal. Where Newport News Public Schools was ten, eleven years ago, where Newport News Public Schools is now. It's just, I don't even know the adjective to use, outstanding, phenomenal, excellent. I mean, this is just, this is just excellent. I also, can you pull a slide back up of where it shows the groups that are beating or that are higher than the, than, than what the state is doing? And that is just simply so awesome to see what has been done. It is attributed to the work that has been done. It is attributed to the work that's been done, the commitment, the belief in children. I believe that, I know the system believes in not only Carol Dweck's growth mindset, but I know Susan Tilly has shared a book with me called Innovative Mindset. And that's just taken it to a higher level. So when you look at that and look at each group in that situation and setting and the phenomenal and outstanding success that is being made, it's, I don't know, it's indescribable. It's, it's indescribable. I was that cute Council of Urban School boards about two weeks ago. And as I was in sessions and in discussions, I would say, you know, Newport News Public Schools, our graduation rate is ninety-three point four percent and continue to talk. People were like, wait a minute, can you say that again? And I would say what the graduation rate is and then would go ahead and discuss what the dropout rate is. And that was the center of one session's discussion that I had. And it was how are you doing that? Who's your superintendent? Tell us about your school board. What's the work and what you're doing there? And those questions were consistently and constantly asked. For these numbers, and I'm not really looking at numbers, you know what I'm looking at, sir? I'm looking at children.
Yeah.
And the imprint and impact that it's making on children's lives. Not as far, not only as far as the academic, but their social developmental emotional growth. They are becoming ready for college, career, and citizenship-ready. And that's being displayed and demonstrated in this situation and, and setting. I want to highlight something that, that was, that's been previously shared. To look at the homeless population and to see that all of those children are graduating and graduating on time, it's just something that, that the public needs to know, you know? It's not about where you live, it's not about the color of your skin, it's not about you being economically disadvantaged. It's about that you are a child and in Newport News Public Schools, the expectation is that you're going to excel, you're going to succeed, you're going to graduate, and you're going to go ahead and do phenomenal work. And that's being displayed and demonstrated. So I congratulate you. I have been into Vanessa Stevens' sessions and just simply know the mindset that they have also. You know, it's about being deliberate and diligent and persistence and perseverance, connected with the book that you shared with me, Grit. You know, it is about those type of things and that's what's being displayed and demonstrated. So I know the whole board is, is totally impressed, but you know what? The community and thank you for making, to everybody in Newport News Public Schools that's worked with our children, thank you for making such a significant difference in the lives of our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments? Mr. Nichols, when you stopped Mr. Brown, I know you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have a report from Ms. Nancy Swett and Carmen Curic. Please come on up and tell us about this quality curriculum for early education.
Yes, also another story about children. So there you go, that's our business, right? So, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kilgore, and members of the board, tonight we are very privileged to bring to you a story about our youngest learners. It is a story about the quality curriculum we provide for our students in pre-K, K, and first grade. Oh, I should use the clicker, sorry about that. Okay, so first of all, you might ask the question of how do we define a quality curriculum? And what does a quality curriculum look like in Newport News? Well, of course, it always starts by being standards-based, but it's also a document that is going to guide teacher practices, teacher decisions, teacher instructional strategies that they will use. And it's also going to provide student experiences that move them toward the intent of the standard and move them toward what, of course, we talk about in Newport News as college, career, and citizen-ready. The document itself is online. So it's a living, breathing document that we, is very fluid for us. So we revise it according to the standards. We also revise it according to our data and the response we see in the classroom. And of course, we respond, we, we respond to student, teacher feedback for what is working and what isn't working. And we can do that in real time. We don't have to wait till summer to make changes. We can make changes all the time because it's online and it can be real in that way. It's also packed with all kinds of resources. So it's a one-stop shop. We don't have to have teachers who are running to get a resource here, running to get a resource there. Everything they need is within that curriculum. So that's kind of the definition of a quality curriculum in Newport News. Tonight's specific example is going to be for our youngest learners, early education, pre-K, K, and one. And I wanted to give you a little bit of numbers there. In pre-K, we have one thousand three hundred and fifty-six students that we're serving this year in pre-K with this quality curriculum. And in kindergarten, we have two thousand and fifty-nine students also being served through this quality curriculum. And then in first grade, we have two thousand one hundred and nineteen students being served. So I just wanted you to have a number, kind of have how many students are experiencing this quality curriculum we're talking about. In Newport News, quality curriculum for us is both unique and consistent. It is all the way through our elementary program. So if you look at the type of learner experiences we're providing, we want our students to have an opportunity to build community. You can't do anything without knowing how to work within a group of people. So we have building community learning experiences. We also want them to make connections. It's not so important that they know that this knowledge sits here and this knowledge sits here. What's much more important is how we consume knowledge, which is that it all informs each other. And then we want them to be able to communicate their learning. One of the best examples of how we do that is with our student-led conferences. But we want students to be able to talk about their learning all the time, with their teacher during writing conferences or reading conferences, with each other in collaborative groups. And then, of course, ideally, when their parents and families come, first student-led conferences. It's so important for students to be able to have a voice and choice in what they're learning, for them to direct some learning. And pre-K, K, and first grade students are not too young to learn how to do that. And so we build a curriculum that allows them to do that as well. It's also so important for our youngest learners to learn confidence about school and to feel good about coming to school and to know that they can learn and succeed at school. So that's something that we spend a lot of time doing in our curriculum by making sure that we are developing that confidence as a learner. As far as what goes into a quality curriculum for our earliest learners, again, pre-K, K, and one, we're looking at three different things. Always the standards that the state of Virginia provides. But for our four-year-old learners, we also look at the Virginia Foundation blocks. And then, of course, as I've always said, in the city of Newport News, we're also pursuing college, career, and citizen-ready skills. And if you look at some of those skills, they're already embedded into our learning experiences. Collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and problem-solving. So all of those things are the, the elements we use to build that curriculum in the first place. So now what you really want to know is what it looks like during the day. So Carmen Curic is our instructional supervisor for pre-K through first grade and she's going to take us through what it looks like in the day.
Thank you. So the best way for us to illustrate what a quality curriculum looks like in pre-K kindergarten and first grade is to take you through their day. So there are six main components of a pre-K kindergarten and first grade day, beginning with morning experiences, which is a time between the time they come into school and the time between instruction starts in the morning. We call that the morning experience time. And we'll illustrate that a little bit more later, but it's a student-centered way in which teachers plan to welcome the students into the day. Students participate in a reader's workshop portion of the day where they are learning early literacy skills through actual books, through reading books and spending time in books. Writer's workshop where they're becoming authors and writing books. Math workshop where they're working through problem-solving and investigating numbers. And then content inquiry time, which often happens throughout the day, sometimes beginning in the morning. And then often another portion of the day dedicated to investigating science and social studies concepts. And then rounding out the day, again, with a time where we come together to reflect on the learning that's happened today through an afternoon meeting or, you know, setting some goals for the next day and talking about what we've learned and sharing what we've learned that day. Aside from the morning experiences and the afternoon meeting, some of those, those circles, some of those times of the day happen, don't happen in that exact order, but they all happen every day. So now we want to take you through each one of those portions of the day, starting with morning experiences. So students are welcomed to school every day, being able to make the choice of how they start their day. They're able to make choices because at four years old, they are ready to make choices about how they begin the day and what they want to learn first. So they're often, they're all welcomed to school with a free breakfast where they sit in a family-style setting, getting able to talk with their classmates. And then they're able to make choices about what they want to do. So they may want to read a book, they may want to go write a note or a letter to their teacher or a friend so they can go to a writing center to do that. Or they have the choice to participate in some inviting learning experiences that teachers have planned for those. And in those, or planned for them. And in our curriculum, we call those provocations, which the root is to provoke. So we're provoking learning with four, five, and six-year, six-year-olds. Some of those provocations deal with social and emotional well-being, so it's getting students to identify their feelings, working on, working with others in the classroom. Some of those provocations deal with some science and social studies concepts where I might jump-start some inquiry so the teacher might have something out where the students are beginning to investigate. And then we round out, we have a culminating time to our morning experience with a morning meeting where students are able to sit in a circle with their teacher, greet each other, share what they've done throughout the morning, and begin their day. And then reader's workshop, again, is a time where students are working through early literacy skills. And we're really trying to do that in Newport News through authentic learning, authentic literacy experiences. And what authentic looks like in Newport News is students reading, students working with books as much as possible. So that might look like students retelling a familiar book, listening to a book that they know, rereading a book that a teacher has modeled for them through a big book, making choices about the books that they want to read by going book shopping in the classroom library or rereading Level Ten. texts that's at my own level, having word study experiences that are tied to some texts that have to do with whatever the skill is they're learning in word study, they're conferring with their teacher about what they're reading, and then sit, working in small groups on those literacy skills with their teacher to have that explicit time. Writers workshop is a time during the day where, again, we're becoming authors, and that happens every day, students every day are writing, they begin that time with a mini lesson where the teacher is teaching them something about becoming a writer or an author, they have time to write independently, and during that time, teachers are conferring with the writers, and the children are able to set goals for themselves about what they want to do next with their writing, or what they want to write in their next book. Students, again, have choice of where they'd like to sit to write, we all have our places where we like to study best or where we like to read best, and students are able to make that choice, and they have choice about what they'd like to write about. Students also, you can see the two little girls sitting in the, at the table, they have the opportunity to write at any point during the day, so there's a writing center that's always open, so when you have that need of, I need to write this right now, they're able to go and do that, and they have a variety of writing tools and write in paper that, for whatever it is that they need to write. The math workshop time is really where we're working on problem-solving, so teaching number and number sense, numeracy for our youngest learners through problems that really have students critically thinking about those math skills. They're often investigating numbers during these problem, problem, the problems that the teachers are planning, and using math games at, at this time to investigate and build their numeracy, and teachers are often conferring with students during this time where they're playing math games to kind of listen for what students are doing and listen to the strategy that they have, and plan the next problem and the next math game of what students need, and then also doing data collection all year long to improve our, our data collection and our math skills through that. And then inquiry, like I mentioned before, inquiry often happens throughout the day, so a teacher might set something out during morning experiences to get students questioning, inquiry is a time where teachers are really creating a thought-provoking question to kind of jump-start something that we're going to be investigating, and then planning some engaging experiences that keep learning going around that question, often around something that we're learning in science or social studies. So you can see some of the pictures, students are observing, recording their observations, participating in engaging learning experiences, and then sharing their observations with their friends in their class. We have a video to kind of take you into some of our pre-K kindergarten and first grade classrooms to really show and illustrate how this morning experience time jump propels learning throughout the day and gets kids off to a great start.
How our day progresses hinges in part on how it begins. With this realization in mind, Newport News Public Schools has designed a unique morning experience for pre-kindergarten through first-grade students that emphasizes creativity, collaboration, community, and student-centered learning opportunities. From the moment students enter the classroom, the learning and nurturing process begins in all pre-K, kindergarten, and first-grade classrooms. Students receive a free breakfast, enjoying the day's most important meal alongside their classmates. From here, students have the choice to learn what interests them, with a buffet of learning stations available around the classroom. During these provocation stations, students are invited to investigate, observe, create, and simply enjoy the learning experience. The stations are designed by our talented teaching staff to fit appropriately with each grade and connect strongly with other content areas such as literacy, science, history, and math. Pre-K students may spend their morning focused on identifying shapes, sorting objects, or designing custom artwork. Kindergarteners can work on constructing objects from recyclable materials, explore like a scientist, or work on writing skills, and first graders have the opportunity to advance their reading and storytelling abilities, or enjoy observing the world around them. Teachers help create an atmosphere of learning by providing flexible seating around the classroom. Students spend as much time as they want moving between provocation stations or cozy up with a book from the classroom library. No matter the pace or the station, students are encouraged to guide their own learning path while teachers simply assist the students to keep them focused. Morning experiences at each school wrap up with a morning meeting involving the whole class community. This is where students can share what they learned that morning, greet each other, or discuss what they are excited to learn as the day progresses. Teachers take this opportunity to reinforce school rules while also transitioning the class into literacy time. So whether students are drawing, reading, building, exploring, or sharing, morning experiences empowers our young learners to take ownership of their learning, and by starting the day on the right foot, students set the foundation for a day packed full of academic success.
Thank you for taking me inside some of our classrooms tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to share some of the work that's going on in these classrooms with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your report. Do we have any comments? Mr. Brown?
A question in regards to pre-K and then kindergarten, if you could walk us through the day, is pre-K and kindergarten, is everyone full day, or most people are half-day?
Full day.
What proportion?
Hundred percent full day.
Okay.
Your comment, Mr. Hasby?
My comment is, could I resign from the school board and tell the kids?
We will pass, we will surpass, pass that interview. We got you.
That is just phenomenal. One of the things I just want to comment on very quickly is the student-led conferences, I think it's just simply so powerful, the pre-K, K, and first-grade level for them to understand that, and understand about mental models, which is really good, and the free breakfast, and one of the unique things that got to see in that video clipping and as you were sharing is, I never saw a teacher standing up at the board teaching. It was always very interactive, they were facilitating, a lot of kinesthetic and interactive and interpersonal learning going on, and that, that was phenomenal that we see that in our early education classes, so thank you for a great report.
Any other comments?
Guess where to find the link at to the video.
It is in the school board docs, and I'm sure we'll be putting it on our website as well.
Yeah, we'll put it on the website.
Any more comments? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move the agenda, we're going to move to item number 5.03, membership report, 5.04 attendance report, 5.05 construction report, aboard members, they were a part of your package, if there are any comments. There being none, we'll move on to 5.06, comments by the superintendent.
All right, thank you very much. I have two exciting awards to talk about first tonight. One, our Discovery STEM Academy, our brand-new elementary school that we were able to build and open last year, they have learned, they have earned a Learning by Design Award of Excellence, and this is from designer, a design association, a national association for school design, they're one of five schools across the country that won the best design learning facility, one of five in the whole country, so we're very excited about being recognized by a national association for the thought-provoking and the, the community enrichment that went into that, the design of the school. It's very exciting for Discovery STEM to win that award, so that's one big award. Secondly, our students and staff at Woodside were named a Blue Star School in recognition of their high pass rate on the financial literacy certification test. And in addition, nine of our high school teachers across the school division were recognized as Gold Star teachers in recognition of their students' successful pass rates on the same financial literacy test, and so the Blue Star School, Woodside, and the Gold Star teachers get to go to New York City to be recognized at the annual Money Power Conference, so that's kind of neat for them. You heard earlier tonight that we honored our transportation department, and this is the perfect week to do that because this is National School Bus Safety Week, so just to take a minute and say thank you to our, everybody in that transportation office that ensures that all of our young people get to school and from school, over 25,000 young people a day, and sometimes even transport in the middle of the day to another program during the day, so we really appreciate the dedication of our transportation staff and all of our bus drivers really do. Two pieces of news, two, two dates to jot down, one, Thursday, October 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00, our high school guidance counselors are, offer extended office hours, so that's this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00, and families and students can stop by and work with their guidance counselors after school hours, and just call your guidance office during this week to let them know that you're coming. And we also want to remind our students and our families that on November 7th, the schools are closed for students, it is a teacher workday on November, Tuesday, November 7th, so thanks, everybody, for everything and the good work.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item number six.
I have no cards.
There being none, we'll continue. Matters, item number seven, matters by the school board, and we'll start off this evening with Ms. Sophia Ramirez, how are you?
Thank you, I'm, I'm doing okay. I want to start out apologizing really quickly, guys, that was a wonderful, such an adorable presentation, a lot of those pictures made my day, but I missed a lot of it because I couldn't stop coughing, I'm really sorry, I was trying so hard to hold it back and I just couldn't, but it was really, it was adorable, and it was just, thank you so much, it was wonderful to see. I want to start out by saying, pointing out that our high schools have been really busy this week, this month, we've been all preparing for our respective homecomings and spirit weeks, and I just want to say from a student perspective, this is something that I really appreciate that we get the opportunity to do, because it allows us to kind of show off our creative side, our goofy side, and of course, there's the excitement that comes with homecoming as well, so it's been a lot of work on behalf of the SEA and on behalf of a lot of the administrators at our schools, but it's an integral part of the high school experience, I think, and really just one that we're always going to remember as students, so I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's putting a lot of hard work into our spirit week and our homecomings in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Well, I think tonight we got the, a lot of answers why to questions that I get often in the community, why do we spend so much on transportation, and the, we saw the return on investment this evening, you spend all that money on transportation so you can get a 0% dropout rate with your homeless population, you spend all that money on transportation so that your economically disadvantaged students can beat the state average and the national average consistently every year. Why spend money on summer school? Because that is what drives that graduation rate higher, having kids in school for more time, getting more time to learn, that, that's what helps kids move forward. And why spend money on feeding the kids in the summertime and, and providing the lunches and the breakfasts? Because it gets the results that we see here tonight, those investments that we make, they pay off, and it's not a frivolous use of money, as we see, that, that's what really helps to drive our division forward. So I hope that folks in the community really acknowledge that and start to understand that that's, that's an important, these things are important investments, and it's important for us to continue to make those types of investments in our children because it gets results. And I also want to point out that, because we had the question about the magnet programs, my own children go to magnet school, as far as the last time I checked, every high school was fully accredited, so magnet or otherwise, the high schools are fully accredited, and the magnet school that my children attend is fully accredited, our Deer Park Elementary and Hilton Elementary are Nashville Blue Ribbon Schools, so I think our magnet schools are doing pretty well across the board, so I want the, the public to understand that magnet programs are very effective, they do attract very talented kids, they do attract kids who have a passionate and interest in a particular subject or an area, and it has served my own children, my own family quite a bit, and has helped my, my children to be more passionate about their academics when they otherwise might not have been. So I think that magnet programs are really essential and important part, integral part of our, of our school division and make our school division very special. We did have the question of a number of children, so I want to ask, I do want to ask the question, how many children graduate with a 2.0 or above? I do know that 42% of our kids graduate with a 3.0 or above, so they're doing a B average or better, so I don't think that there is any majority of children who are getting a 2.0 or below, but I would want to ask that question. I would like, would be very interested to know how many kids want to go to New Horizons but are unable to, but I also want to point out that New Horizons is not the only area where children can learn career skills, where their children are getting certifications. We, we reached a, we reached a great mark this last year, we almost reached two certifications, CTE certifications per every student, we did over 2,000, 2,555 CTE certifications for students so they can learn the types of skills, job-ready skills, mechanic and et cetera, we have our various magnet programs, again, that are teaching automotive and other maintenance types of skills, nursing, et cetera, technical career-ready skills that are getting our kids ready, so I just want the public to be aware that we already have a vast program in place for teaching a lot of career-ready skills, and New Horizons is a fantastic place to go, but it's not the only game in town.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Simon?
I just want to let everyone know that Mr. Brown and I attended the Virginia School Board Association Legislative Conference last month, and a lot of focus was placed on the teacher shortages that we are experiencing throughout the state, and we, we all know that we have retirements of teachers, and so the demand for teachers is going like this, I knew that, but what I didn't know is that one concern at the state level is that the supply of teachers is going like this, so the supply of teachers is going down, and that, that was, that was news to me. So I think teacher pay raises are so important in terms of attracting college graduates and undergrads to go into the teaching profession, and I, I really think it's something that we all need to focus on. I was very appreciative of a work session that the school board had last week where we talked about teacher pay, and it was impressed upon us that we actually don't have built-in steps, like every year, you don't go up a step. The, the pay raises we get for our employees, we really have to fight for that funding to come from either the state or from the city, and so as a school board and as a school system, we have to go out and negotiate every year to make sure that our, all our employees, our staff and our teachers can get an increase, and I think we're all dedicated and determined to do that, so I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Simon. Mr. Stodger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had some great information and reports tonight, and I think really what stands out as a huge accomplishment is Newport News Public Schools gets an A for graduation, on-time graduation rate, and we, with 93.4% on-time graduation rate, we're ahead of the state average, we're ahead of most localities in the state, and we're ahead of our peers locally, and an unbelievable figure that, you know, we've got a 2% dropout rate. That, that message needs to go out big time because those are, it's, it's not, those indicate that our students finished the race, they finished their K through 12 education, and they're succeeding, and at a rate that I think all of us should be really proud of. It didn't just happen, we've been hearing good news on this front for the last three or four years, and it's gotten, we figured out how to bring that home and how to make it work for kids, it's a complex, it's a complex interconnected series of support systems that are all geared to student success. It's taken the school board to get behind that, it's taken the leadership of the superintendent, it's taken a grassroots effort with our leadership and all of our, all of our staff and all of the folks who are really trying to support teachers and support student success. I just think this is a moment where we, we all need to take, take a, a moment to just look at how we're shining in this regard, and also realize that if we can do that, we can address positively accomplishing all the other steps to getting back to full accreditation everywhere across our whole spectrum of schools. This is what Team This is what teamwork looks like. I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to have seen that we've been able to pull that together in Newport News. So thank you to all the board members and everybody who's the family of Newport News Public Schools.
Thank you, Stodgill. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and for all of the guests, locally and on TV. I would like to thank the War High School staff for the preparation and the family members for those two young men, Cameron Smith and Isaiah Ramsey. It's a great reflection on, on the leadership in that school. Also, thank you to the staff members that feed our kids from Le Hall, Heritage, B.C., Charles, and Woodside. I'm sure that's one of the most important periods of the day. Congratulations to you, Ms. Hammond, for your support of your school system. And also, last but not least, I think it's Ms. Hernandez, correct? Ma'am, I want to give you my apologies, and I'm going to speak for myself as a, as a parent of three grown kids now and of our two granddaughters, 11 and seven. Individuals on this board were elected by the people to ensure that the first order of business is the safety and security of every child. So I want to give you my apologies for that, and that we as a school board probably do or will need to look at policies and procedures to ensure that every kid is safe. Secondly, we are supposed to write policies, that is our job. So Michael, don't let it go out to you, your son. I hope he recovers, and I hope this school board take a hard look at the climate that creates situations like that. So just from me to you and your, and your family. I don't know if we have enough trade schools, but I hear it all the time in the community. We need more trade schools, more trade schools, more trade schools. So hopefully, Mr. Chairman, that we will get the, a chance to take a look at that and I report back to the public. All right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say that it's been very exciting to see all the great teachers and principals and administrators get ready to go back to school. I've been visiting a lot of schools and just seeing how excited these kids are to learn and to eager to learn. It's just been exciting, overwhelming. Also, great to hear about the dropout, the dropout rate for our students in Newport News is definitely going down, and it's much success for our graduation coaches. Without them, I don't know if we'll continue to go down, but I think we're going to definitely hit that zero mark, because with the support of the teachers, principals, administration, and our amazing dropout coaches, we're, we're doing great with that. Also, anything else that we had, for Newport News, we was named 2017 AP Scholars, we have 250 students named AP Scholars. So that's amazing, amazing. We're definitely up from last year. And just want to say that we're definitely doing great things in Newport News.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Vice Chair.
Good evening. My comments will be brief, just that. I just want to say thank you for the great reports that we heard and the success that's happening. So all the way from early education, early intervention, all the way up to graduation, the success that is being, that's taken place in Newport News Public Schools. You know, I'm sorry to sound redundant, but just phenomenal and outstanding. I think that's the only way to, to describe it. I do share that I've been on the board for, oh wow, almost 12 years, and one of the things that happened is we had some financial challenges maybe six or seven years ago, and it was at that time that Dr. Kilgar, the senior staff at Newport News Family, huddled around and, and saw the need for graduation coaches. And it was a challenge with, with finances at that time. But one of the things that Dr. Kilgar has shared with me is a leadership blog by a gentleman named Mr. Rockwell, and he says, when you're in a challenging situation, you don't look at your option, you look at your options. It's not what strategy, you look at the strategies, not just doing one thing one way, but what are the best ways to do it. And because that climate and because that has filtered throughout the school system, that's one of the reasons why you're seeing the results that's happening and taking place in the situation and setting. You know, backwards up against the wall, but, but Dr. Kilgar and the senior staff and everybody saw, we need graduation coaches. This is going to improve our on-time graduation rate and reduce our dropout rate, and look what is happening. So a lot of times you, you invest in something, you may not be able to see it right then and there, but if you hold on and you stick with it, you stay the course, then you see the results and situations that is happening. I too want to commend the two young men that speak. I actually know both of them, they did a phenomenal and outstanding job. And I think I would close with, we, we talk about the graduation rate and the success, but one thing that needs to be said and shared, it, it is every single player, we have 5,000 employees in Newport News Public Schools, every single person, whether it's the superintendent or the nighttime custodian at the smallest elementary school, they all play a part in it. Every single person, it's like putting a puzzle together. Every single piece makes that whole puzzle complete. And a puzzle is complete because it is shared by the early intervention that's happening, the success of our children, but also how many children are graduating and graduating on time. So hats off to every single person in Newport News Public Schools that, again, that's making imprint and impact on the lives of children. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ashby. I'm not sure what to say, but there are great things that are happening in Newport News Public Schools. I'm not going to reiterate, I do, 93.4% graduation rate, 2.3% dropout rate, new graduates of our nutrition services, wards who are bus drivers to get us there. We have one of the fabulous reporters here, we've making her hurry, she's even making on the road. And so I hope that, that award that you've received tonight, and you've deserved it, I'm hoping that somewhere on our newspaper, we'll see in our front pages, the graduation chart, so that people don't, people don't think that this is fake news. Again, I'll say that if someone told me, say that again. Hope to see that graduation chart somewhere, I'd like to see it on a top fold of the newspaper, but, so people don't, these words and these things you saw tonight won't be fake news as we've heard, this is real news. That's all I have to say. I want a voice and choice for our young kids, it's, it's unbelievable. We, we just have a fabulous, fabulous school system here, everyone working together, as you said, from the custodian to the superintendent. We couldn't make these marks without each and every one pitching in, getting a child, grabbing a child, and teaching. And so with that said, I wish each one of you out there in the next week or two before our next meeting to have a safe and happy Halloween, because I know that's that time. Nothing else been said, we're going to move our agenda to, to, to section number 8.01, our closed meeting. And we do have a closed meeting tonight, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to present a motion. Motion is to convene a closed meeting in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A, subsection 1, for the purpose of discussing the performance of a specific public officer.
Second?
Seconded.
Yeah, any question? There being none, please go on the road.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mr. Stodgill?
Four.
Mr. Ashby?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
And Mr. Ely?
Four.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we'll move to our closed meeting.[1685.86]